Good evening. Thank you for your patience. We'll call this meeting into order. Please stand and join me in saying the Fledge of Leaguers.
Aye, Fledge of Leaguers to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item we have here is to review the minutes from February and March of 2023 and May of 2024. Secretary, do we have that? We just, we have that on the record? We were, we reviewed those. Okay, so we'll, we'll move on to the first item on the agenda. So we have the Killian addition, 15 Susan Drive. So the applicant is seeking an area variance for a second story addition. The proposed addition is in violation of Section 155, 58 E1A in reference to non-conforming lots, which this property is, stating that a structure cannot be considered if it does not meet current zoning regulations. The proposed addition does not meet current zoning regulation according to Section 155, Attachment 2, Schedule B. The proposed addition is also in violation of Section 155-58F2A, which states no non-conforming structure shall be enlarged, extended, or altered unless it meets certain requirements, which this structure does not. The applicant is seeking an area variance for minimum side yard setback. Section 155, Attachment 2, Schedule B requires a minimum side yard setback of 40 feet. The applicant is proposing 21 feet and is seeking relief for the remaining 19 feet. The applicant is seeking a variance relief from Section 155, Attachment 2, Schedule B for maximum lot coverage by impervious surfaces. Requested variance relief based on calculations by engineer. So, as I understand what's laid out here, the home was built prior to the current zoning going into effect, is that...
It appears that way.
And, and now with the current zoning regulations that are in place, the home would, to be modified, it would have to conform to those regulations in order to, to have those, those modifications be conforming with what's required?
Yeah, we don't have a forgiving code at the moment. I think what we should do is open the public hearing, hear from the applicant, make a determination as to whether or not they're appealing the decision of the ZA or seeking a variance from her decision, which is in her building permit denial. It says you may apply for a variance or appeal a decision made by the zoning administrator, and then we can take it from there.
Okay. Do I, do I get a, a motion to open?
Yeah, so you can, you can call the public hearing, make a motion have the applicant come up to the podium and then make a motion at the public hearing.
So if you would please step up to the podium. So I'd like to get a motion to open the public hearing.
I second it.
Second. Roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, so, so if we could just review your application here and just want to draw your attention to the building permit denial. So as, as I understand here, under the current code, you're required to have a 40-foot rear yard setback and you're... So can you just go over what you're, you're looking to do here? And then this way we can just make sure we understand what, what's being proposed?
Yeah, we're looking, we're looking to do partial second story addition. We're just going up, we're not going outside the footprint.
So the horizontal footprint won't be changing at all?
Same, we're going, we're going up, and so it's an addition and, and it's just, it's just going up on the, on the side of the house where we have the 20 or 21 feet. And obviously, we need 40 feet, we don't have that.
You're going over the garage side or over the house side?
Over the house.
Over the house.
Yeah, so if you're looking from the road, it's on the left.
Yes, I was just...
And you're not doing the whole?
We just want to add bedrooms and a bathroom, because we haven't seen the plans.
So on the plans that were submitted to us, what we have is what looks like an outline of what's labeled existing dwelling. And there's a garage and a deck. And then there's an area in gray that seems to come outside of that area that says proposed second story addition and then proposed covered porch. So there's two components?
Well, yeah, the porch would be also part of the, and that was in the denial also.
Got it.
So it'd be, it's a partial second story addition and a front covered porch all the way across the...
Now, setting the, the covered porch aside for a second, we'll come back to that in a second. It, it appears on these plans that this proposed second story addition would extend to the, you know, to the one side, the footprint of the home. The gray box seems to suggest that that second story would include an expansion of the footprint horizontally. Am I misreading this?
Yeah, it, it, we're not, we're not going outside the footprint, like where we're encroaching on, would be encroaching on the other side. It's just going, where, where the house ends now,
Just completely vertically.
It's going to be the same spot, same spot going straight up.
So that's wrong.
The only, the only part that'd be going out is up the front, which we have, we have the setback.
Which is the porch.
Which is, not a living area.
What is that noise?
Pit!
Oh, on the mic, a mic. It's me, it's me.
Can't take you anywhere.
It's literally just, just going...
So, yeah, this is so...
It's not going over, out, it's just going up.
Yeah, it's directly up.
So you're pretty much making a farmhouse out of a...
Exactly, exactly. That's, that's what we're going for.
Hence the front porch.
Yeah, that's, yeah, exactly.
Well, it's a non-living area, there's some porch too.
Yeah, but that's what, you know, that's what I would do with a ranch.
Exactly, yeah, it's gonna...
I wanted to put porch on my, on my ranch too. After I built it, I noticed...
Did you have a conversation with the zoning administrator?
Who?
The zoning administrator, the building inspector?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did you inform her that you were going vertical? Because it, it appears on the, if you look at this map, it appears that you're adding to an existing structure horizontally.
This is a denial.
This does not look horizontal.
The way it's presented to us, it's a denial of increasing the footprint of the house.
But she's...
So that's, if you were just going vertical, then this wouldn't be before us the way it is. The porch would be, but not the second story.
No, because if you, if the, I used to do drafting. Anything with the lines, that's the addition. So when you look here, that's the addition, that's exactly what's here. So it's, so it was red.
It's in the same, but this is...
No, I agree, I agree, no.
Yeah, I mean, we let them know that that was the plan. It was, the addition was going straight up as well as the front porch. But she said that the addition would also...
I think she's looking, I think she looked at, at...
Front picture.
The top picture. I think that's what she, might have gotten mixed up.
I don't know.
I don't know, because it doesn't seem like that to me.
But I do have other questions.
Are you saying that the existing dwelling includes the area where the proposed second story addition is?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's our...
We're, we're, that's our, that's our bedroom, basically. And we're going, we're putting two, two bedrooms and a bathroom above our bedroom, basically.
So you're putting the primary bedroom on the bottom floor, you put the two top?
Yeah, 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 it's already, that's, our bedroom's already there, we're just putting two bedrooms upstairs.
It's not changing the setbacks to the side at all.
Well, it has, it has a bathroom and a walk-in closet.
As many feet as the, the town.
They could go up three stories.
I'd put French doors going out to a patio.
So...
Yeah.
It's red.
But we do have to consider the porch.
I went to school for interior design.
So, yeah, why don't we talk about that right now? So really, the, I think the, I can't speak for the zoning administrator, but what happened here was, I believe, it's the only, from her decision, she believed that the addition was, was a brand-new footprint addition. And that is why she denied...
Right, but she's also, they put the setbacks, which are not being affected at all.
No.
Correct.
So there's no reason to worry about the setbacks.
That's what I was, that's what I was kind of wondering, but I wasn't going to question her, question her.
Well...
You can.
Well, you still...
It's a misunderstanding, I think.
You are questioning her because you appealed her, so we're here.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and then there's a couple more questions that...
Well, let's talk about...
This one?
This one first, and then you can talk about the porch, front porch.
You had a question about the...
I have a question.
The second story?
Yes.
What is it?
Well, my question is, you're doing additional bedrooms upstairs. You're on a well-able septic?
Yes.
Do you, are, are there three bed, the size of your septic, does it meet the amount of bedrooms?
It's going to, because it's still going to be a three-bedroom house. The, the second bedroom downstairs is going to be opened up and made into an office. So closet is going...
Yeah, so you're still, you're still, your septic system is still conforming to the size of the three bedrooms? Maybe the 15.
That was my question.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's still, it's still going to be three bedrooms.
Okay, so you're just redecorating upstairs?
Reconfiguring.
Got it. That was, you know, something that...
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
You know, we've got to think about, because you've got neighbors very close, so... Okay, now we're going back to, that was the question on the second floor.
Yeah, I had to do that.
Okay, so...
I had, I had to do it separately.
So what we do have, though, is an expansion of the footprint for the porch.
Right.
Right?
That's a porch of non...
So the, what you're proposing is a 46-foot wide porch?
Wide, around six feet out, 46.
Got it.
So it's technically the length of the house.
Like this.
Now, if I read this correctly, that the porch is really going to line up with an existing deck that's there? The front of the porch?
Yep, but we're not, we're not going over into the, like, our, we have, we have the clearance in the front. We just don't have it on the side, but we're not going to the side.
Got it.
We're ending at the end of the house. No steps in the end, nothing on the end, it's going to be a railing.
Do we have any questions on that?
No, he's saying that the whole front porch is on the existing current house.
What's the width of the porch?
It's six, six feet out, six feet out. And that, and that matches the existing deck that's there now.
Oh, okay.
Well, it also...
It'll bump right up to it.
It'll fall in line with the neighborhood, they're all about porches.
Exactly, exactly.
Did you ever think about switching your kitchen with your dining room? Huh?
What's that?
Did you ever think about switching your kitchen where your dining room is?
Not yet.
Just a thought.
It's not, it's not even any, it's not even bothering the septic system layout over here. So basically...
Your septic is in the back of the house?
It's in the front.
It's in the front.
It's 50, literally 50 feet.
I mean, that's what you're going to do during deliberations. Well, first of all, you can make this motion, then, then turn your attention to the porch and go through the five factors.
So in light of this newly discovered information that's come to our attention, that the ZA may have overlooked or misunderstood what was in the application. And I, I do think that the, the way the survey reads, it's very misleading. Because it, it seems to really suggest that that addition would be a horizontal expansion. So, so I'd like to make a motion to have the applicant go back to the building department for an amended building permit based on, on the information that has come to our attention. So, motion to...
Second, third.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Okay, so that motion passes. That part of the application will go back to the zoning administrator for reconsider, her reconsideration based on those newly discovered facts, that this is a vertical change rather than a horizontal change, and a vertical change within the same footprint, same existing footprint that does not require variances. So she needs to interpret whether or not they can do so as of right, which apparently, you know, we should be able to do.
Okay, so that's for the addition, but that's not for the front porch?
Right, now the front porch, in respect to the front porch, you should now consider the five factors and go through that.
So if, so if I could draw your attention to your application and setting aside the, the second, second story addition and just thinking about the front porch, right? If you could take us through the, the criteria that are laid out in your application. So just starting with number one, and just walk us through, and again, thinking about it from the point of view of the porch only and not the second story, because the second story is no longer being considered. So will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the nearby properties be created by granting the variance for the porch? So if you could just talk us through that?
No, just because, like they had said before, there are other porches on the houses surrounding us. It's a very similar feature. I don't think it's going to be a detriment to the nearby properties in any way, we're not, we're not going to make it ugly.
Right, okay. Can the desired result be achieved by some other means than granting the variance?
No, because the one side of the house is too close to the property line, so it's that, only that 21 feet instead of the 40 feet that's required. So we'll still need a variance in order for it to line up.
But I guess, could we do a porch without the variance?
It's not going, it's not going horizontal towards the property line at all. It's staying, it's ending at the house, and it's going towards the front, towards the road, not the, not the side property line.
No, the front, the front, the front, the front variance is 40 feet. You'll be 21 feet from the road?
No, from the road, it's much, it's much harder.
No, it's much longer. No.
Yeah, it is definitely much longer.
Yeah, we're set a little back from the road.
No, I drove it, it's... From the road, it does not affect the porch at all.
This side variance, right?
Well, the house is already here, so he's not going...
So you're just rounding off your existing porch?
Yeah, basically, going across the whole front, yeah.
But he's not going... That's, that's the, the one that's the, like, with the longer driveway?
Okay. Does your, your front porch protrude from, from your front facade toward the road currently?
Right now, the existing one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it comes, it comes out from the existing house about six feet, and that's why we're going to come out with the other porch, six feet to match that, but across the whole front.
Got it.
With a, with a, obviously, with a roof.
So you'd be, you would, you would not be... You would not be going, protruding any further than the existing porch?
No.
Or the house itself.
Or the house itself.
Yeah, or the house itself. Everything, it's almost in the same footprint, a bold, bold thing, so...
Well, I guess...
It's a new structure, but I mean, it's...
But how many feet does a, does a porch have to be from the road? Isn't it like...
It's the side variance, it's the side setback.
Yeah, it's the side setback is a problem.
But they're not...
But they're not, they're not, they're not going out horizontally. They're only going out forward.
I think, I tried to explain, I did try to explain, I didn't call her, but I emailed, I did explain that to her. I was going up, now, I wasn't approaching on the, on the existing structure. And she still...
Yeah, she's still set in a variance.
I think it's a 100-yard variance. How many yards are, how many feet are between the road and your front door?
Over 100.
Over 100, I have a feeling it's a...
Yeah, I think so too, because there's a septic in front.
Yeah, it's all septic, all septic building.
Yeah, I saw that, you're about to setback.
Yeah, I, I was kind of baffled that, that we're not going towards a big side property line at all. She was still saying, I mean, the area is a little...
Okay, so what did you guys?
So, okay, so the, the deck is built on the front of the house. The deck is a new structure. It would have to either conform with code or get the variance. So the side setback would have to be 40 for the deck, either way.
Would have to be what?
40.
40 feet.
Right, so we need a variance for the deck.
Need to grant a variance or consider granting a variance for the side setback.
So I, that's all they really need, they don't need to go back to...
So let's continue, sorry, let's just continue through the, the factors here. So, so really what we're considering is a, a variance for the side yard so that you can have the deck, which is a new structure on your house.
Yeah, that'll be...
Right, okay, so is the variance substantial, number, item number two?
It's not, no, it's not substantial.
No, I don't know. It said we're not approaching on that side at all.
And it's only coming out six feet from the house, it's not.
Will the variance have an adverse effect, an impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
No, a lot of the houses are, have, do have front porches around the area.
Yeah, blend in better.
Yeah, it'll blend in nicely with the surrounding, the surrounding houses.
Is the alleged hardship self-created?
Self-created?
There's no...
No, the house is pre, the house is pre-existing.
Yeah, the house is pre, yeah.
Well, I mean technically, yes, because there's a new, new structure that's being built. However, they, they have to operate within the confines of the existing zoning, which is a hardship.
That's why you need the variance.
Which is the hardship, yeah.
So, so, so we would...
The side setback.
Do you have to scan, is only one thing, the box guaranteed?
So we only need to go side setback, only, that's all. There's only one out of the two, yeah.
The area.
Which is on the porch, side setback only.
It's the only thing we got.
Yes, which is this one. That, yes.
I'll ask if there's anybody else who might can make comment, but you don't see anything.
All right, I, I think we're, you can have a seat. Thank you. Do we have any other questions that we want to review before?
No, that was the questions I had about the septic, we've answered. As long as the porch ends with the house, we only need one side setback.
And the code, I think, has 40.
We only need a side setback. I don't know, I don't know.
Oh, too bad. I'd be pissed at her. Cookies I made for a bridal shower.
Oh, how cute, oh my god.
I'll finish more.
He's so talented, my god. So that's, the footprint, draft and then you're good.
I loved draft, that was my favorite thing, was the draft. These are, these are...
Nice.
It's 40. So they need a 16... 16... 16 and 8. There's some, this is terrible. 16.
Who's all that?
Lou, Lou Pennella.
All right. My god, he said those.
Oh, yeah, cowboy Lou.
So, I think we can take the board, the discussion of the factors, and overall, ask, feel...
Jess, my, Jess, my guy, you're in.
He's big, he's big, he's great pianist.
That's murder.
He's a great pianist.
Yeah. That's murder, that's it.
So, just reviewing what we have before us. So we're, you know, we're, we're looking at a variance of 16 feet 8 inches for the side yard to allow for the porch to be added to the home. You know, from my perspective, this would enhance the...
Neighborhood.
On the neighborhood.
It's in line with the side of the house, it's not protruding.
This is one of the smallest houses in the area.
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
You know, we're only considering the porch, but I think it would be consistent with what's in the neighborhood.
It's also balance out the house itself, you know? Doesn't, it'll look more flowing.
Yeah.
So it definitely won't, it's not detrimental to the community.
Right, exactly, if anything, it will be a positive thing.
Absolutely.
Any, any concerns or...
No, as long as we, you know, it goes the way it's supposed to.
So, I'd like to make a motion to grant side yard setback variance for the front porch for a total of 16 feet 8 inches with 23 feet 4 inches existing and 40 feet is required. So they're required to have a 40-foot side yard. They have currently 23 feet 4 inches, so they need to be granted a 16-foot 8-inch variance. So can I...
I second.
Second?
Yep.
Roll call vote?
Lendo?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, side setback variance is granted with respect to the front porch. All right, and the decision will be forthcoming in writing, which will be given to the zoning administrator so that the applicant can proceed with their building department. Any questions, comments? Why don't you come to the podium?
Say, say if the building, the, the building inspector sticks with her decision with the addition, where do we go from there? With, with giving, saying... With, with giving, saying, you still need a variance?
The, the ZBA has, has ruled. So she is going to have to abide with the ZBA's determination.
So you got, you, you favor.
The only thing that you did not show in your plans, though, and we need to make sure, is that the addition does not exceed thirty-five feet.
Okay.
So you have to show that, and you're, you're, you're going to have to show that to the zoning administrator, that, that the height of, of the building does not exceed code.
Thirty-five feet?
Correct.
Okay.
So I think, based on that, if you, you're able to show her that, that it doesn't increase the footprint of the home?
Yeah.
And that it doesn't exceed thirty-five feet? Then there's, there's nothing to.
Thirty-five feet in height.
Yeah, I'll have the architect, I'll have the architect do that.
Thirty-five feet in height.
Thirty-five feet to the peak.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Can they, if they go to her, like, next week, do they have to come back to us?
No.
No.
No, we'll be good?
As, as long as you stay within the footprint.
Footprint, yeah. That's the plan.
The dilemma is the footprint, it's, is as it is.
Yeah.
The way it's born.
Yep, only going up.
Good luck. Okay, good luck, thank you. All right, have a great evening.
Have a good evening.
Good night. We're going to close the public hearing.
I don't know what she was holding there.
I don't either, it's strange.
I don't understand. Were you going to go to the house to? All I have to do is bring it up on the zillow.
Okay, so returning to.
Hold on, before, before we can move on. You know, you have to establish jurisdiction. So Alitha just handed the certificate of mailing, and the certificate of publication, and all of the certified mails, mailing. And does that, did you compare that to?
I did, I rechecked that out.
Okay.
This is for this.
And this is, you have, this is certificate of publication, in the PCC journal.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So you should probably, before you.
Talk it into the minutes.
In the future, you just introduce that first.
That they did.
Establish jurisdiction.
Okay.
Okay.
So all the mailings conform to our code.
Okay.
And establish that, and that it was advertised.
Okay, so we're in receipt of the certified mail receipts and the copy of the advertisement that was placed in the PCC journal. And upon reviewing this, these submissions, the information appears to be consistent with the requirements for public notice for this, this application. Do we vote on it?
No, it was just making. You're making the record. All right, now, respect to the minutes, Alitha, with, I was.
That was February twenty, twenty-three, March twenty twenty-three, and last month, this year, May twenty.
Do you have the, you need to make a. Need to make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
So we're going back to the minutes.
All right, so returning to the review of the minutes from February twenty twenty-three, March twenty twenty-three, and May twenty twenty-four, I'd like to make a motion to accept the, the minutes from those meetings. Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Wendell?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Great. And finally, one item of other business. So we have a proposal to revise the twenty twenty-four zoning board of appeals meeting dates and submission deadlines. Modification to the existing ZBA meeting schedule is proposed as follows. Shifting from the first Thursday of the month to the first Tuesday of the month. And the current meeting date submission deadlines and proposed meeting date submission deadlines are laid out below consistent with the switch to the first Tuesday of the month. I'd like to make a motion to adopt this change to the ZBA meeting dates and submission deadlines.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Wendell?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Bristol?
Aye. Motion passes. So I believe that's the last item on the agenda. Motion to end the meeting?
Second.
Oh, no, do we have something else?
Is there a revision, other business? There's other business, right?
Oh, that's what they just want, the, the new dates.
I'm sorry, I was reading.
No, no, no. That's a good meeting.
It's been a long day, man. You guys are fast.
Yeah, only one, only one customer.
I just want to, I think we need to clarify one thing on that, that application, by the way. And I, and I can't, I don't know what. I just want to draw the attention to the board, for the board, for the impervious surface. Impervious surfaces. Where in this application is there a calculation for the impervious surface? Really?
Well, wouldn't that be only if they're expanding the footprint of the deck?
That's exactly, where, where did you see, where did you see that? Ah, all right, she, she asked for it, but.
To be calculated by engineer?
That, that was when we thought the home was expanded. Exactly. That was when we thought the addition was, was an expansion of the footprint of the home.
Right. Okay. Not, not for the porch.
Right. But we've established the record and established that the footprint isn't changing.
Right.
Yeah, I was going to say, there's no surface.
Well, the survey really looks like it, it, that, that survey was not helpful to suggest that.
It was definitely not helpful for the zoning administrator.
Exactly, it, it definitely gave the wrong impression. We all.
Was this ever calculated, though? Oops. Where is that?
Do we need it?
No, I don't think so, because the only thing that was changed was the porch.
Right.
And that is min, minims.
Right, it's a very small, modest.
He's not adding, not the square footage of another house in front of the house. Six feet.
All right, all right, six feet. Tiny, very tiny.
So you can make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
So what's the, what's the next, what's our next date? First Tuesday of?
July second.